Calling the February 8th, 2024 City Council Meeting to Order. Councilmember Nutting has the pledge. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Councilmember, or excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz has let me know that he is actually suffering from COVID right now. So, I would like to excuse his absence this night, tonight. Do we have a motion? I'll give the motion to Councilmember Nutting and the second-
I move to approve the motion to excuse Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Motion. And second, second to Councilmember Oxker. Thank you. So, oh yeah, all those in favor? Seven zero, or six zero, thank you. Let the record show that Councilmember Steinmetz is excused and six councilmembers are present. Clerk, do we have any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So now it's time for comments from the public. Please keep your comments respectful and recognize that anyone causing a disruption to the meeting tonight will be removed. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your city of origin. And I do have a question. So the first person we have on the list is Barbara McMichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Barbara McMichael from Des Moines. I just wanted to mention briefly, I am so proud of this city council for inviting the port to come on February 22nd, I think it is, to talk about the land stewardship plan. This will be the only opportunity for folks to hear the port talk about this in person. They had a Zoom meeting where people could make comments in the chat, but other than that, so this is a, this is an extraordinary opportunity for our citizens to be able to hear the port talk about this. I've talked to the environmental committee members because this is a land stewardship plan and about some of the issues we're concerned in and some of the points that we've raised that we hope, we hope that you will have a chance to think ahead of time about the questions to ask the port as you represent our community for the well-being of our community. So anyway, again, I'm being premature a little bit, but I just wanted to congratulate the, the city council for giving us all this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Victoria Andrews.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I want to express my gratitude to Mayor Buxton for reappointing me tonight to the Citizens Advisory Committee. I also want to thank previous Mayor Mahoney for the group of residents he appointed to the reactivated committee. I found them to be an astonishingly committed, capable, intelligent, and diverse cross-section of our city's population. He said he knew many of them, and I believe it, because he really got out into the community, as Mayor Buxton also does. I encourage the others whose term was only for one year, and we didn't get started until May, to reapply if you found the experience as energizing as I did. And to those who did apply but were not selected during the first round, reapply. To anyone who's considering applying, go to the city's website and apply. Be prepared that the process will make you feel like you are applying for a paid position with the city. It's a bit onerous, but it's worth it. I hope that the committee will be able to meet each quarter, in other words, before May. Appointments are open-ended and vacancies can be filled at any time, but I'm sure the entire current group is ready to dig in now. And I hope Mayor Buxton will consider staggering terms for continuity, so there's always a seasoned representative in each pair. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight and to continue serving my community.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Next up is Lloyd Little.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The draft EIS came out recently. Some wonderful coverage of the history of the Masonic Home is reading it. It's really beautiful. Did find a couple of issues. Just wanted to go over those. Worked with George Pettibone on this. The draft EIS for the demolition proposal of the Masonic Home and all existing structures fails to adequately and fully account for the effects of removing a retention wall that has been holding up the hillside for nearly 100 years. It only seems to be treated as a decorative piece. This is a major oversight and puts traffic along Marineview Drive and the entire neighborhood of Zenith at risk of significant damage, as well as the ocean shoreline below. Using Google Earth Pro, we were able to estimate the square footage and the elevation differences. The area of the retaining wall to the very back of the tree line next to Hudson Ridge is approximately 884,712 square feet. Elevation above sea level at the retention wall is about 45 meters. Elevation at the back of the tree line next to Hudson Ridge, about 55 meters. This is a 10-meter difference, about 33 feet, on a downward gradient that slopes all the way to the sea. It even keeps going up into Hudson Ridge, the highest point along the first street to Hudson Ridge at 62 meters. We do not include the square footage behind Judson Park to the north, as that will not affect the retention wall as much. All this water will sheet and run down the slope during a rainstorm. If you have a one-inch rainstorm, water is about 5.1 pounds per square foot that is one inch deep. Multiply that across the total square footage, and you have 4.5 million pounds of water flowing downhill toward the retention wall. This retention wall was built with a solid understanding of this dynamic and principle. That recognition and understanding is absent in the demolition proposal and the draft EIS. How did this get by the consulting firm or firms helping to draft the EIS? That's a big question we have. The most that is said in the draft EIS is silt fences and hay bales will be put up across the demolition site to contain any runoff. Silt fences and hay bales won't stop nearly 5.1 million pounds of water flowing downhill. A two-inch rainstorm would be approximately 10 million pounds. Three-inch would be approximately 15 million pounds. Climate change can cause erratic weather and rainstorms out of the blue, like we're seeing in the atmospheric river in LA. Just last fall, we had a two-inch rainstorm in Seattle, so this is not uncommon. This has the potential to flood Marineview Drive, homes along Marineview Drive, and even wash over the Zenith hillside and turn the hillside into a waterfall, flooding homes along Seventh Avenue and all the way down to the sea. Even worse, taking out the retention wall would expose a three-foot-high muddy bank with no support that could potentially slump and cause a mudslide, turning Marineview Drive into a dirt road and taking out homes and anything in its path as it goes over the hillside. It could potentially even flow north downhill along Marineview Drive, clog the drains with grass and dirt along the way, flood all the way down to Taco Time and Massey Creek. I'm going to finish. This is my last sentence. This is a salmon run. Estuary is a danger to the threatened salmon and may require a shoreline permit and approval from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. We'd also like to call for a 90-day or 60-day extension up to April 22nd to read this, because I've got through about half of it, but we need to find out what's in there, what's, more importantly, what's not in there. And so, this is a major oversight. George is going to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. George Pettibone. Mr. Pettibone, if you could wait for just a moment, the city manager-
Pardon me?
If you could wait for just a moment, the city manager has something he would like to say.
Uh, thanks for the last comments as well. I just wanted to make sure that both of you, when you're talking about this, that you're also submitting these comments to the city, because we have a consultant that's collecting all the comments, and then we'll be incorporating those into the final environmental impact statement. So, anything said to the council tonight is not getting included in that. So, if you look on our website, there's links to the comment portals, and that's the official place where your comments will actually get on the record and be considered for the final document. So, please, you can say what you'd like tonight, but please make sure to go to our website and input those comments there.
Thank you, city manager. Go ahead, Mr. Pettibone.
Okay. My name is George Pettibone. I live in Zenith, Washington, hillside area everybody knows about, right up on the hill here in Des Moines. We have a possibility of 5 million or 10 million pounds of water coming off of this hillside. The weight of it will multiply dramatically when mixed with 5 or 10 million pounds of dirt. As the whole hillside acts as a giant sponge in the rainstorm, during the rainstorms, we're currently seeing in California, the retention wall and the building and the basement slows down the flow of water. The water backs up behind the wall and the building. Some of it drains through the circular holes in the posts along the concrete wall. You can see some of the drain holes that were installed by the masons 100 years ago, because they understood water and what it can do. And there was even one of them with grass growing out of it. The rest of the water soaks into the hillside and slowly filters out over time like a sponge. You can see the puddles around the trees on the sidewalk on a sunny day, as much as eight inches deep on a sunny day, and the whole lawn along the sidewalk is full of water, going underneath the retaining wall and popping back up again. The building and basement itself acts as a retention wall also, slows down the water sheeting downhill from the tree line along Hudson Ridge during a rainstorm, approximately equal amount to the front retaining wall. The building itself is on a gradient. Removal of any trees would increase the sheeting as well. Taking out the building and retention wall and the basement increases the risk of flooding, slumping, and a mudslide like the one in Oso, Washington. This poses a significant risk to traffic and people in the cars along Marineview Drive, personal safety to residents in the Zenith neighborhood, as well as potentially significant damage to property. We can all call for a redo of the draft EIS that accounts for demolishing the retaining wall and building that has held up the hillside and contained the water for nearly 100 years. Professional analysis of this situation must be done. The only safe way to demolish an existing retention wall would be to build an equal or better holding pond, and before you tear down anything. And when you start building something like this with an unacceptable risk, you must have an idea where the mud's going to go. If it flows down to the bottom of the river, it will be called Messy Crick instead of Massey Crick. There will be, there will be on another note, another issue. Alternate two or three of the draft EIA is selected, that is, to leave everything in place and do nothing or revitalize the building with an adaptive reuse. This would leave the retention wall and the building and the basement to hold back the water problems. There's five large wells on this property. I, I'd like one sentence left?
One, one sentence, go ahead.
Okay, here we go.
Yep, yep, go ahead.
This will flood, this will flood Zenith homes and businesses all the way along Marineview Drive down to the Taco Time. This stuff is all going to end up in the river, and it's going to be massive. It could reach the ocean quite easily by going down all of the driveways. It's going to, the driveways are three-quarters of an inch above Marineview Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Pettibone.
Okay. We look forward to some kind of successful looking into this matter.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming.
You betcha.
Next, we have Mark Prue.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm Mark Prue. I live in Des Moines. And on December 11th of 2023, I submitted two code enforcement complaints via the city's website. And I'm pretty adept at using technology, but nonetheless, I found the process to be pretty awkward. Nonetheless, I did manage to supply the required information. Since then, 59 days have passed, and I've yet to receive a response regarding either complaint. Examination of the complaint log reveals that both are quote-unquote "active," but what that means is unclear. The clumsy user interface for this system discourages its use. The failure of anyone from the city to respond in a timely manner is unacceptable. My specific difficulties with the system and the complaints I filed aren't glamorous issues that make for great publicity. Nonetheless, they're precisely the kinds of things that matter to people in their everyday lives. They're the kinds of things that, when done well, give people a bit more confidence that their city can progress and become a better place to live. Conversely, they're the kinds of things that, when done poorly, discourage citizens from civic participation and diminish confidence that the city can accomplish sort of the bigger-picture stuff. As in so many other areas of life, the little things are the big things. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, Mr. Prue. Is there anyone else who came this evening expecting to give public comment and did not realize you needed to sign up first? All right, thank you. Next, we have committee chair reports. And there were a couple of committees that did not, were not able to elect their chairs yet, because we had missing councilmembers for sickness and so on. So, I'm going to ask Councilmember Mahoney to give us an update on a couple of these committees that have actually met. So, I'm going to hand that over to you for finance and transportation, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Financial committee, as you mentioned, the chair position was delayed till the next meeting in March. We discussed the work plan for the, for the year, and one item we particularly discussed was the potential for a biennial budget, which would mean a budget we approve every two years rather than the current method of one. We're going to bring it back up in March, and most likely to be brought before the council itself for consideration at a, at a date, because it's, it's this year we'd have to approve it in, in a even year for an odd-year execution, should we decide to do so. The other, other meeting, committee meeting was transportation, same thing. Chair was, due to an absence, the chair was delayed till the March meeting. We did a work plan review. Some of the components will be TIP, Transportation Improvement Annual Reviews, the CIP review, reviews of some contract information. We added a couple of factors like updates on sound transit and traffic light cameras and a few other things. And we got an update on 24th. There's an issue with PSC and some of the power poles and some of the locations that's causing a delay in that process, and there's more to follow on that. I was a busy guy. I also attended today the PSRC Transportation Policy Board. There was a discussion on a ferry support legislation. That's House Bill 2492. We looked at our regional transfer plan recommendations. There were some adjustments of about $14 million. For those that you don't know, don't understand, the Transportation Policy Board is the one that decides where a lot of the money is allocated across the state. And for six years, I've been trying to get on this board, as I've been kind of one of the leaders in transportation for the city. I achieved that this year as an alternate, so I'm really happy. So, I get to be part of the discussion. So, that's good for our city, to have that representation. Couple of things that were interesting in another presentation is, in the commuting window, pre, then they compared it to pre-pandemic levels. Ridership on public transportation is down 33%. Vehicle transportation's only down seven. So, more people are taking their cars. And we're talking issues about public safety and so forth. But the key is, with these great investments that we have coming in the future on public transportation, how do we get more people to use them and get cars off the streets and find greener, cleaner methods and so forth? So, I thought that was an interesting thing. Anyway, I'm excited, because we develop policy from 2026 to 2050 currently. And, and it's, it's nice to get a say in that room. It's, it's big for our city. That's what I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Also tonight, the environment committee met, and I'm going to pass the baton over to the new chair, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. We also, in addition to electing chair, went over the work plan for the year. Traditionally, the environment committee has primarily been associated with stormwater management. We run our own stormwater utility. There was consensus on the committee to expand that purview a bit into things like, you know, tree canopy and, and a bit more perhaps towards the airport and, you know, the, I think, the broader understanding of what an environment committee might do. But there is also an acknowledgement that we're going through a change at the director level. We're getting a new Director of Public Works, and that is, I would say, one of the top three, four positions in the city. And so, the reactor is going at 125, as they say. So, we're going to, you know, hold off on some of that stuff for a while, but that's the general idea. And I guess that's about it, until we have something more specific to say. Oh, except that I, I would like to be able to see things like, we have these great presentations at the Mast traditionally on water quality, and it would be wonderful to bring them to the full council, so that the entire community can see them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. We also had a public, public safety meeting, and I was, I was appointed chair of that, of the public safety committee meeting, or the public safety committee. And at our meeting last week, we reviewed, had a presentation from the chief and reviewed the work plan for 2024, which includes, which, over the year, is going to include updates and briefings. And of those, we'll, we'll be hearing about the leadership training in the department, camera updates. We have three different camera systems that we're using in the city that do different things. We'll be talking about fireworks enforcement. There's going to be some crime data gathering and strategies that will be developed from that data, some animal codes. We'll be talking about summer events and block watch, our, our block watch system, which includes our National Night Out in August. I hope almost everybody participates on that. It's fabulous event. And also, some business support activities. I think our department recognizes that their presence and the work that they, that they do is integrally entwined in the success of our business community and economic development. So, I think a lot of, traditionally, we haven't really looked at PD as an economic development driver, but really is these days. So, that was it for public safety. Okay, next up is the city manager's report. So, I'm going to hand the baton to city manager George.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update. At our last meeting, we had talked about the Hearts and Minds Fund, and there was the request to bring back the balance. We'll be doing that at the February 22nd meeting, also with the recommendation on funding scholarships. So, we'll bring that forward on the 22nd. This next update is a cool one here. On February 2nd this year, there was the Engineering Excellence Awards Gala, held by the American Council of Engineering Companies. And what I've been told is, this is the Academy Awards of Engineering. And I didn't go, and then I read this, and now I'm bummed. I wish I would have gone. But I didn't go, but we did have some city representatives there, and the city did receive an award. So, I want to hand it over to Councilmember Mahoney, who attended for the city, to provide an update on that event.
First thing I want to say is engineers are riveting people. And I see the engineers laughing more than anybody. Yeah, so, so the city of Des Moines at Exalt Tech Consulting received the Best in State Engineering Excellence Silver Award, and it was for the North Parking Lot Bulkhead and Restroom Replacement Project from the American Council of Engineering Companies, or as you said, Academy Award of Engineering, Washington Chapter. The project was honored for innovative application of new or existing technol, techniques. The existing bulkhead was experiencing significant failure, as we all know, necessitating its replacement. The project constructed new bulkheads around the park area, new restrooms at the park, new sidewalk promenade and pedestrian plaza, and new breakwater at the southwest corner of the parking area. And I think the amenities and the look and feel and some of the details was one of the other things that was really special. Kylie and Andrew Murgis assigned city staff on the project, so I want to recognize them, along with a few others. The finance department played a key role on funding and tracking the project. The building department for their support on the restroom inspection and noise variance request. The harbor master and marina staff for their various support throughout the project. And Michael Mathias and the city council for their leadership to complete the entire project in a single phase. So, it was, it was great to hear and see success and have, when I was talking around to several of the engineers and those types of mindsets, they were really impressed with the project. So, for them, I guess it was where a lot of us might not find some of the details sexy, for lack of a better word. They sure did. And with that, we have this award, and we'd like to call those that I called out here to come up front, so the mayor can present the award and we do some photos.
So, to add on to that, on February 13th, at the Des Moines Beach Park Auditorium, we are going to be having a meeting to discuss where we're at on the Marina Steps project. So, that won't be built this year, but maybe we'll be at the Academy, Academy Awards of Engineering in a couple of years to get another one of those, and I will not miss that one. That sounded like a really, really fun event. So, yeah, the meeting on the 13th is at 6:00. It goes from 6:00 to 8:00. And there will be a presentation from our consultants and our engineers on where we're at in the project, as well as lots of renderings of the design and some timelines on construction. So, it's going to be a great meeting, and that is next Tuesday. Last item I have is a presentation. We have with us tonight Claire Goodwin from South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. She is going to be presenting on item number four on the consent calendar tonight, which is the Housing Capital Fund Allocation Recommendations and Approval. So, Claire is the executive manager of Skip, so I'll hand it over to Claire.
Thank you, city manager George. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Buxton, members of the council. My name is Claire Goodwin. I'm the executive manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip for short. Thank you for having me here this evening. I am so excited to present to you the Skip Executive Board's recommendation on Skip's 2023 Housing Capital Fund. This will be an annual process, and some of you may recall a similar presentation from me last year about this time, in addition to a supplemental presentation back in September. Now, there we go. So, Skip was formed in 2019 through an interlocal agreement- Now, there we go. So, Skip was formed in 2019 through an interlocal agreement between several city governments and King County to address the housing needs of South King County as a unified, coordinated, and collaborative coalition. Des Moines was a founding member. Skip currently has 11 member jurisdictions, which are listed on the slide. C-TAC recently took action to join Skip and will be formalizing their membership later this month. Des Moines is represented by your very own Mayor Tracy Buxton, who serves on the Skip Executive Board, and by way of background on Skip's Housing Capital Fund, in 2019, Substitute House Bill 1406 became law, allowing cities and counties to recapture a portion of Washington State sales tax when it's used to support affordable housing initiatives. You may recall that the effective sales tax rate didn't change for the consumer, and instead, the tax gets credited against the state sales tax. In 2020, House Bill 1590 became law, allowing jurisdictions to impose a 1/10 of 1% local sales and use tax to support affordable housing, behavioral health facilities, and related supportive services. Cities had a limited window to act and retain those revenues before the county collected that revenue. And like most King County cities, Des Moines does not collect that, does not collect that revenue, but four of our member cities do, and we pool those resources for the Housing Capital Fund, which is why you're hearing about it tonight. Oops, not quite. So, in 2021, City Council authorized an interlocal agreement with Skip, which allowed the pooling of sales tax receipts received under Substitute House Bill 1406 from each participating member jurisdiction for use by Skip in funding affordable housing projects. In 2023, two of our member city councils authorized an interlocal agreement with us, which allowed the pooling of sales tax receipts received under House Bill 1590 from both cities for use by Skip in funding affordable housing projects. In 2022, Skip launched the first funding round of the Housing Capital Fund, and last year, you approved two projects for funding. And just a quick side note, an update on those two projects, the Burian Habitat for Humanity Home Ownership Project has completed most of the civil work, including a sound wall and the necessary utility infrastructure at the site. And we're close to finalizing our funding contracts for this project. And the Mercy Housing Northwest Burian Family Housing Project is scheduled to apply for permits in late summer, and they anticipate beginning construction mid next year. So, even though we funded it last year, the project needed to secure additional funding this year to move forward, and they successfully secured awards from the Department of Commerce and King County. So, this is a, the second of an annual process with Skip and member jurisdictions to fund projects with these pooled resources through the Skip Housing Capital Fund. Use of these pooled resources requires approval from each participating city council. Even though you have already contributed these funds to Skip, your council will need to authorize the allocation for those funds to specific projects. This approach allows multiple cities to pool their funds for projects across South King County to maximize the creation of affordable housing overall and in each city. So, Skip opened the second annual Housing Capital Fund application in 2023. Six projects applied for Skip funding with broad geographic diversity throughout South King County. If you recall, our last funding round received three applications, and all happened to be projects in Burian. Geographic diversity is one of our goals, and we made sure to get the word out for this funding round that this new funding source was available. The Skip Advisory Board reviewed applications and forwarded its funding recommendations to the Skip Executive Board that reflected the policies and priorities adopted by the board. After careful deliberation, the Skip Executive Board concurred with the majority of the Skip Advisory Board's recommendation and recommends funding for projects totaling $5,747,306, with $777,306 of the total sourced from Substitute House Bill 1406 revenue, and $4,970,000 sourced from House Bill 1590 revenue, as described in the Skip Executive Board memo dated January 17, 2024, which was included in your agenda packet. So, the Skip Executive Board's recommended projects and funding levels for each project are listed on the slide, and I'll briefly go through each one. First, we have Mercy Housing Northwest Kent Multicultural Village in, you guessed it, Kent. It's a 199-unit new construction multifamily rental project located adjacent to the future Kent-Des Moines Link Light Rail Station. The project will support households earning between 30% area median income, or AMI, to 80% AMI, with a 20% set aside for households with an intellectual and/or developmental disability or an ADD. The ADD units will benefit from onsite supportive services. A 30% set aside will be for families with children. The requested funding from Skip is $1 million, and the same amount was recommended by the board. The special conditions include being a deferred contingent forgivable loan with no repayment, as long as affordability and target population are maintained, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least 50 years. Second is a project from Lehigh, located in Skyway in unincorporated King County. It's a 55-unit new construction multifamily rental project with onsite support services. The project will support households earning between 30% and 50% AMI, with a 75% set aside for households transitioning out of homelessness. The project will prioritize tenants with a connection to the neighborhood and includes an early learning center. The requested funding from Skip is $2.8 million, and the same amount was recommended by the board. Special conditions are the same as the previous project. Third is a project from TWG called Pandean at Star Lake, located in Kent, adjacent to the Kent-Star Lake Link Light Rail Station. Skip funding would support the South Building, which is a 168-unit new construction multifamily rental project that will support households earning between 30% and 60% AMI, with set asides for families and families transitioning out of homelessness or are at risk of homelessness, and households with an ADD. Onsite supportive services will be provided. The requested funding from Skip was $2,856,000, and the board recommended $1,170,000 due to the construction timeline being further out than the other projects that applied, and also expending all of our funding on other projects. Special conditions include being a deferred 1% interest nonforgivable loan to the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Partnership, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least 50 years. And finally, we have multi-service centers, Victorian Place 2, right here in Des Moines. This is a 20-unit rehabilitation and preservation project, supporting five households earning up to 35% AMI, 10 households earning up to 40% AMI, and five households earning up to 50% AMI. The requested funding from Skip was originally $500,000, but an updated construction budget was submitted, and contingency funding, funding was recommended by the Executive Board, bringing the recommended total to $777,306. Special conditions include being a secured grant with no repayment, so long as affordability and target population are maintained, and the covenant's recorded to ensure affordability for at least 50 years. So, this slide shows total amounts sourced from House Bill 1590, contributed by jurisdiction to the Skip Housing Capital Fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for each project. You'll see a similar breakdown for the Substitute House Bill 1406 funds on the next slide. The first three projects we discussed are being funded through House Bill 1590 funds pooled by the cities of Covington and Kent. This slide shows total amounts sourced from Substitute House Bill 1406, contributed by jurisdiction to the Skip Housing Capital Fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for the rehabilitation project here in Des Moines. You will also see the unallocated amount by jurisdiction to be used in future funding years, and the amount that was carried over from 2022. We are seeking authorization from City Council to allocate the amount listed for this project under your city in alignment with the Executive Board's recommendation. This is $30,261 for the multi-service centers, Victorian Place 2 Rehabilitation and Preservation Project. So, in conclusion, we're looking for your support to authorize the allocation of $30,261 from the city's contribution to the Skip Housing Capital Fund to finance the affordable housing project we talked about today here in Des Moines, per our interlocal agreement requirements. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Councilmember Mahoney.
So, this, great job, by the way. I just want to compliment you on that. I, I think you guys have done very smart planning and execution of your recommendations. The one glaring thing I've noticed is C-TAC continues to not play. Is there any efforts to get them to play?
So, on January 23rd, I'm very happy to report that their council took action to join Skip, and the next step is that the Skip Executive Board needs to take action to formalize that. And in addition, I'm happy to report they are bringing $300,000 to the table for the Housing Capital Fund.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
And that's from the $1590. They, they are a city that collected their $1590?
C-TAC is not one of the cities that collects the $1590 revenue. They are contributing general fund.
Wow. Impressive. Any other questions for Claire? One, one thing I want to recognize that I appreciate about Skip so much, and our, our partnership there, and the way they operate in this region, the Affordable Housing Community, is according to their funding priorities, they need to get approval from each jurisdiction where they, if they fund a project inside of a jurisdiction, that jurisdiction is well aware of it and needs to approve it. That's why she's here tonight. They're, they're not allowed to fund projects that are not approved by a municipality. So, very professional. I really appreciate the way Skip operates that way. So, we have no further questions.
Great. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you, Claire. And Dorset, welcome. I'm glad you're here.
And that concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So, next on the agenda is consent. So, City Clerk, will you please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Citizens' Advisory Committee Appointment. Item four, South King County Housing and Homelessness Partners Housing Capital Fund Allocation Approval. Item five, patrol vehicle purchase. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve. The consent calendar is red.
Second, Councilmember Mahoney. Is there an item that Councilmember wishes to pull from the consent agenda? All right, great. All in favor, raise your hand. Looks like there's six of us, unanimous for tonight. Thank you. Congratulations and thanks for coming, you guys. So, I do want to make a little note here. We're going to move next to new business, and the agenda's a little bit short tonight because we had some, three of us spent quite a bit of time in Olympia advocating, all up until this afternoon, working down there. So, we wanted to make this meeting a little bit light tonight, but we will have some stacked agendas coming up in the near future. So, want to let you know that. So, next on the agenda is new items for consideration. So, this is a time for the purpose of provo, promoting, proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda that also have not been previously before the council. This is not a time for council action or questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the City Manager at any time. So, do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? Okay. Next up then is Councilmember Reports, and we will start with Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no remarks.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Oxker.
Thank you, Mayor. No report tonight.
All right. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Just first off, I, the public comment, you know, you guys are just killing it. They're uniformly excellent. I wanted to mention the one person who spoke about the web form, and I could not agree more that there are these details of execution that, yeah, we were, could not agree more. So, I was in, I've done more driving. I'm exhausted. So, and I mention that because I watched Senator Kaiser put in these 10, 12-hour days during this session, and I don't know how, I don't know how she does it. But I attended the Port Breakfast, and spoiler alert, the port is doing fabulous. And then off to Olympia to support a couple of bills, one SB 2070, which has to do with basically providing permitting money on environmental projects, big environmental projects like at C-TAC Airport. That went down in flames, but it's relevant to housing, because the reason they're able to contribute so generously is because they do have that construction permitting money, and I sure would like us to be in on that as the airport expands. Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and I were part of the action days, and we met with Senator Kaiser on 5955 Port Package Updates, which was alive and then dead, and then alive, and then dead, and I guess maybe it's back alive again. And I wanted to mention that in terms of housing, because I showed the Senator, she wrote a letter in 1998, her and Representative Smith complaining about the inspection process on port packages. She's been working on this since forever. It was a known problem from like, basically the very beginning, and I mention it in terms of housing because we're moving simply too slowly on building housing here. You know, you can either, you can, you can basically fund a city, you can raise taxes, okay, or you can provide more places for people to live. And we have to protect the value of our middle-income housing here. It's the reason I and so many families moved here. And port package updates are part of protecting that next generation. If we're slow on building, the least we can do is do everything humanly possible to retain the value of what we have. And I want to thank Senator Kaiser for putting in those 12-hour days to keep moving with SB 5955. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mahoney.
I don't really have anything too serious. I, just like our city manager, I am not part of a conspiracy to have the Chiefs win the Super Bowl, so Taylor Swift and Travis Kelsey can announce their candidate for president. I'm just going to take the Chiefs I'm just going to take the Chiefs this weekend, 24-20. That's what I have.
Oh, heavens. That's it, huh? All right. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. Yes, you've already heard from Councilmember Harrison a little bit from Mayor Buxton about my attendance at the Association of Washington Cities Action Days. I also attended an early morning, early for me, newly elected officials breakfast on Wednesday, and you can tell the newly elected because they're walking around with their eyes about this big, wondering what they've gotten themselves into. But it was mostly about resources and ways that we can get support from the Association of Washington Cities, and I found it to be very helpful. I would also echo a couple of things that Councilmember Harris said, that I think we are very fortunate in this area to have such a great relationship with our senators and representatives, and it was very much on display this week while we had the chance to sneak out of the Association of Washington Cities Conference to go talk to Senator Kaiser about the bill. So, that was very much apparent to me. We also, you know, the format of the conference was a little bit different because typically folks break out and go into different rooms depending on conference style and what they're interested in. But we were in one very large room, so it was more like a symposium style, and I think it was very interesting because instead of self-selecting into different topic areas, we were all in that one room talking about issues that many cities all across Washington, regardless of size, are dealing with, and I found it to be really interesting and enlightening about some of those commonalities regardless of size. So I want to thank everyone for the opportunity, the City Clerk for helping us register, and for the Mayor Buxton for driving. That was the big lift, I would say. I attended several committee meetings, including Public Safety and Emergency Management, and also the Environment Committee that was already reported on. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it was a pleasure to drive, and I also want to give a shout out on 5955. It's going to be headed toward the House, and Representative Orwell is going to be picking up the baton, but she's a rock star, so she's going to, she'll be moving forward with that. So I've been busy last few weeks, meeting with citizens, colleagues across cities, the staff, the city manager. One fun thing I participated in is the pit count. I'm not sure if, it's called the point in time count. They used to do it, it's a mandate. If you receive federal funding, you count the homeless in your city. Make sure you kind of keep up on that, and they used to do it at one cold night in January with a few hundred volunteers would go all over the county and dig around in parks and in alleyways and try and count all the homeless. And, you know, there's just no really perfect way to do this, and so they've devised a little bit different system. It's kind of a, it's a survey system, and you can do it during the day inside of warm buildings over a period of a couple of weeks, and, you know, it's not perfect either, but they're trying to make it work. So it was a fabulous opportunity to just really engage one-on-one, hand-to-hand with people in the homeless community, laughing and high-fiving rhythm, really. It was a great experience for me, so appreciated that. Many of you may have seen out on social media that we're getting a new farmers' market manager, and the Board is collaborating well together. They're pulling together, they're excited about the summer, they've got a lot of tasks to catch up on this spring, but they're working hard to get a new manager onboard right away and moving forward, so they're excited, I'm excited. So, I was elected Vice President of Sound Cities Association a couple of weeks ago. I'm excited about the voice that I can carry there, representing our cities in King County. I also attended a Growth Management Policy Board meeting in PSRC, and this has been already brought up, but ferries are a big deal. Ferries are a hot topic today even at this thing we had, a fireside chat with the governor. He loves ferries. I mean, he's very supportive of the ferry system and getting money into that, PSRC is. And, by the way, there's another little kind of quasi-ferry bill at 1510 that's moving quickly through, all the way through the House and is going on to the Senate. It supports the historical district downtown, right on the waterfront, which in turn supports Pier 48, which is what we would need if a ferry system and a ferry fleet was going to be dispatched from Seattle and work the South Sound. That's the pier that we would need, so that's on the docket and moving forward, so we're happy about that. Let's see. As many of you may know, the public safety bills died, but our city is moving forward with conversations to continue to work public safety support. So, I think that's about it for my report. Very thankful to be working in this city and thankful for our citizens and the staff and my colleagues. So with that, the next meeting date will be February 22nd, 2024, and Councilmember Nutting, would you like to motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the February 8th meeting. Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.